To our July 20th City Council meeting. Those online, we hope you're following and watching us. We'll start our meeting now with our roll call. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Marshand?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Glad. Glad. He's not here. You do call his name.
Our next item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand and follow me in the pledge, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Agenda item number three is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Material Claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of July 1 to 15, 2023. B, Civil Service Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Timothy Rice to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, replacing Michael Larson, who resigned. Timothy's term will begin July 21, 2023, and will expire May 7, 2027. C, The Historic Preservation Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Marty Viscara to continue serving as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Marty's term will begin July 11, 2023, and expire July 11, 2026. D, Pocatello Arts Council Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of William David Hans to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, filling a long-term vacancy. William's term will begin July 21, 2023, and will expire February 22, 2025. E, Personnel Policy Handbook Amendments. Council may wish to approve changes to the drug-free workplace policy of the Personnel Policy Handbook. The changes are necessary for federal transit grant compliance and are minor corrections with a major change of scope. Changes were presented to the City Council at the July 13, 2023 Work Session. If approved, policy changes would be effective July 21, 2023.
Council President?
Councilwoman Mangum?
I would move that we approve the Consent Agenda Item, Agenda Item 3, as specified in Sections A through E.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurik. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Agenda Item Number 4, Proclamations. We have no proclamations, and I failed.
Was that, was that for all of them? You not even discuss any of these people?
No.
Discussion for any of these items?
That's right.
And we don't have any say on what?
No. Item Number 4 is Proclamations. We have no proclamations this evening. And just for clarification, I failed to mention Agenda Item Number 6 has been pulled from the agenda this evening, so we won't have that one. Agenda Item 5 is the Calendar Review. On August 3, we'll have, at 4:30, a special City Council Executive Session. At 5:30, be a clarification meeting. At 6 o'clock, a regular council meeting. And August 10, at 9 a.m., a City Council Work Session. Other events include the Ross Park Band Concerts on Sunday evenings from 7 to 8 o'clock through the month of July, and a continuation of the open burn ban in the Wildland Urban Interface areas. Agenda Item 7 is a public hearing on the vacation of right-of-way for 1620 Sunset Road. This time's been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request to vacate the public's interest in right-of-way extending across 1620 Sunset Road. The application was submitted by Evelyn Richmond, represented by Brent Richmond. Staff recommends approval of the application with conditions. With that, I declare the public hearing opened. Council members, has there been any ex parte contact?
No, sir.
Clerk, has there been any contact in the clerk's office that we've not received?
No, sir.
Anything illegal?
No.
All right. Does the applicant like to come forward and make any statement?
I have nothing to add to it. We continue the process to get her down.
All right.
Good evening, Council President Cheetham and Council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. As known, the application has been submitted by Evelyn Richmond, represented by Brent Richmond, to vacate the public's interest in right-of-way extending across 1620 Sunset Road, or 1620 Sunset Road. The existing right-of-way is 60 feet in width and 275 feet, more or less, in length, bounded on the south side by the north, sorry, lost my, south side and by the north right-of-way of Juniper Hills Road, and bounded on the north by the east boundary line of the replatted Roads and First Edition subdivision, which is, which was platted in 1973. The right-of-way is being realigned to match with the existing Sunset Road, platted as part of the Gregory amended subdivision to the north. The subject portion of Sunset Road was platted as part of Roads End subdivision. Property owners within 300-foot radius of the boundary were informed of the right-of-way petition. Several property owners called to receive clarification. None provided testimony in opposition. One individual provided written testimony in favor of the petition. Staff recommends approval of the request to vacate the subject right-of-way with the two conditions outlined in the staff report. And if you have any questions, Merrill's been working closely with the property owners and probably answer any questions you have on it.
There's been no other correspondence except that that you just mentioned?
I have not received any, council.
Good. Staff, any question, council, any questions for staff? All right. We'll ask for testimony now by those supporting the application. Testimony by those uncommitted on the application. Any testimony by those opposed to the application? All right. Any rebuttal? With that, we'll close the public hearing. And I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Chairman?
Councilman Nichols?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 7 as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Lurik. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Agenda Item Number 8, An Exception Request to City Building Code 15.28 for 1504 South Third Avenue. Council may wish to consider request by Cole Bingham for an exception to city fence requirements to allow a six-foot fence to be installed at his residence. The Construction Board of Appeals in review denied Mr. Bingham's request on July 5, 2023.
Council President? If we can get Merrill to come or?
Let's overhear from the applicant.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We do that if Mr. Bingham would like to come up and tell us, plead his request?
Good afternoon, all. Good evening. So my, my name is Cole Bingham. I'm the property owner at 1504 South Third Avenue, along with my wife Kylie and our two kids, Kason and Connery. He's just four and two. We purchased the house two years ago, back in July of 2021. And when, we've been saving up for the last couple of years, ever since moving into the house, to build the fence that we now have at the house. And so we're saving up the last couple of years to do that. And then, once we started to do it, before I started to, or build my fence, I went into City Hall. I talked to Planning and Zoning first, and we sat down, looked at my property on Google Maps. We went over different things, looked at it. I showed them where I was proposing to build my six-foot fence, told them I was doing it myself, and then they referred me to Engineering Department. And we did the same thing, talked about, you know, I proposed fence. And then I started my, the building of my fence. And again, I just was doing it myself to save a little bit more money on costs, because it's expensive to hire someone to do it. And so I started to do the fence, and then just after the posts were already cemented in, I got calls and different things from the city building officials. They came out, put a stop work order on my fence, and told me that, you know, I was in violation of, you know, of the codes there, of the higher requirements, the right-of-way. And so, once they told me that, I went into the city to apply for a permit, knowing that that's what I was supposed to do. I didn't know this beforehand, that I had to get a permit. I didn't know the building department existed. And so I immediately applied for the permit. Of course, they denied it, which I knew would happen after that, and needed to go get an exception of some sort in order to, to apply for the permit. I'm not above paying for the permit. It's, I believe, $20, and I'm not above paying for that. And so what I did then is, in the code, and I, I hope you have all, you know, read my appeals I've brought forward, but in the code, it says that exceptions can be made if you're, if you prove that there, it won't create a disturbance or traffic, you know, violations for anybody in the neighborhood, and as, as long as it's not architecturally incompatible with the neighborhood. And so I've provided written statements and consents from my neighbors, all neighboring property owners, as well as a lot of others on, on the street. And all have, are fine with my fence. Nobody has an issue with my fence. The only people that have issues with the fence are the couple of building officials, and which I understand. And so, you know, I've proven that, hopefully, that, you know, with the pictures I provided, there are other people in violation of the same things that I am. And to me, it seems like, you know, some of the building officials are selectively enforcing the codes that they're enforcing. I mean, even neighbors across the street are in the same violations. And I brought that up to them, and they have not done anything about it as of today. And based on, you know, what I've, I've brought forward to them, I'm hoping that I can get an exception from the City Council. I went to the Construction Board of Appeals before this. I mean, I know it says they denied my request, and that was only denied because the city building official, Richard Bagalow, said that they had no power to grant me the exception. Not because they didn't want to, but they said that they had no power to grant the exception. Even though, under Section B, subsection B, in the code I provided in my appeal, it clearly states that they can give that exception. And so I'm hoping that you guys can, you know, give me that exception, based on what I've, I've brought here today. So, thank you.
Council, questions of the applicant?
I just have a few. You realize that you're, you're in the right-of-way, right?
Correct.
So you said you put the posts up, and they put a stop order on it? And, but when I look at the pictures, panels are up too. Did you continue on after the stop order?
No. I, there's still two sections that are with posts.
So that, that fence looks like it did when they told you to stop, I guess.
What's that?
And the, that's, the pictures that I looked at, when they put the stop order on it, you just stopped at that point?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, there's still two pieces that, there's posts near the completion part. There's a part by my garage that still is not completed. The posts are there, but there's no rails.
But you understand that because, because it is in a right-of-way, that makes it tough to build a sidewalk, if, if it comes to that, right?
Sure.
The other part of it is, is I know that your neighbors say that it's all right, and that it's not a traffic hazard until there's a car wreck. But your neighbors can't tell anybody that it's not a traffic issue, right? They can say, it doesn't bother me, right?
Sure.
But, but the traffic part of it makes it a little bit tough, and that's, that's why they talk about the four-foot fence, so you can see over it, line of sight.
Right.
At intersections.
Yeah. And to, to that point, I understand that. But if you were to look at my fence, the side street, there's no visibility issue whatsoever with the fence. It's, there's an alleyway behind my, my house, and that's where they're saying is, you know, potentially is a visibility. But there's, I provided that line-of-sight triangle as I put in my pictures, so even coming out of the alleyway, I mean, you have to stop. You can't just, you know, go through the alleyway, right? And you have to stop, and I, you know, provided a picture of me in my car, you know, before I go into the intersection. And because of my line-of-sight triangle, I've, you can still see from intersection to intersection. And, you know, with regard to the sidewalk, I do understand that. And I asked in the Construction Board, you know, about the sidewalk. And Merrill, in the Engineering Department, said that it's up to me, as the homeowner, to put in the sidewalk. And so if, if it's up to me to put in the sidewalk, I mean, again, because of costs and other things, I can tell you right now, it's, it's not going to happen as so long as I'm going to be in the, in the home. I don't see a need for, you know, sidewalk myself, and it's just cost-wise, I can't, you know, put in a sidewalk. Now, I'm, I'm happy to do it, move the fence, you know, if they ever, or if I ever decide to put in the sidewalk. But until that point, you know, I'm hoping I can.
But I think there becomes a bit of liability, right, on the city's part? If, if we say, yeah, it's all right in the right-of-way, and then we have a, we have a traffic issue, and the code says it can't be in the, in the right-of-way. That's my hang-up with it, right? It's in the right-of-way. I know you're all right with it. Your neighbors could be all right with it, but I think it becomes a little bit of a liability on us if we go, yeah, we're all right with it, we'll, we'll let you do that, and then something happens. Unfortunately, you have to look at the liability portion for me. Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions for the applicant? We hear from staff, please.
Are we just looking at the height, or are we looking at the placement? Because it sounds like there's two.
Good afternoon, council. I posted the stop work order.
Identify yourself.
What's that?
Identify yourself.
I'm Tyler Diller, the city building official, or city inspector. I posted the stop work order on April 22, 2023. Our right-of-way inspector, he stopped Cole Bingham on the 21st, when he noticed that the poles were in the right-of-way there, going six foot. Our building code, our city ordinance here depicts that you can only have a four-foot fence right up against the right-of-way there when you have a house adjacent on another street. You can't be no higher than four feet in there. You have to be at least 20 feet back from the property line back to go up to a six-foot fence on the way that his sits. He sits on Third. The opposing house sits on Lawton Street. You have to have a 20-foot setback for any fence greater than six feet, in any front-yard setback. It is your guys' decision to approve if he can be at six foot, as long as he's on the backside of the right-of-way right there, and he gives us the line of sight for in the alleyway. But as the code reads now, he can't be no greater than four feet on that side of the street, where he has the opposing side on the other side, too, the house.
Council, questions? Corey?
So are we looking at this from the standpoint of the height being above the four feet? Or are we looking at this from the, because it sounds like there's two issues, right? So there's the height issue?
The height issue, and then the right-of-way issue.
Placement issue?
Yep.
Okay.
But the issue before us tonight is the six-foot fence.
Right.
That's what the appeal is on.
Right.
How far back is the, oh, I'm sorry. The right-of-way from the curb back, how?
It's approximately nine, nine feet.
Have to be nine.
From the, from the back of the curb to the back of sidewalk, from the house that's on Lawton Street, they have a sidewalk right there in front of there. I measured from the back of curb to the back of the sidewalk where that sits, and it sits at nine feet.
And it's, the fence now is at about three?
And without knowing exactly where his property line is, he'd have to get a survey, get our property pins, and get his lot surveyed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lurik?
I just want to understand, you said the issue that we're deciding tonight is the height and not the right-of-way issue.
That's what I understand. That's what the appeal is on, correct?
Okay.
It's on the height of the fence, correct?
But does that mean, just for argument's sake, if we approve this request and go with the six-foot fence, that it's still going to be in the right-of-way?
Yes.
So, but we're not considering that part of the problem? Is that?
That was my original question, was to get that clarification.
Merrill Coyle, the Public Works Engineer for the city of Pocatello. The only thing that was appealed, for appeal tonight, was the height. I'm just bringing to your attention that it is in the right-of-way also, and he was, Mr. Bingham was advised of that, and that needs to be removed and, and moved back. Even though it's not an appeal tonight, and that, the city is still asking that that fence be removed from the right-of-way and put back onto the property.
So that was, if I may, that, that was my question, is the fence needs to be moved regardless of the height, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Councilwoman Mangum?
So the applicant had stated that you had conveyed to him that he, it's his responsibility, or would be him who would put in a sidewalk. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I can. That day, when we did, I, I let him know that the code was that the property owners are responsible for placing the sidewalks at that time. I also made mention not that it wasn't going to go in, but the right-of-way, you know, it going in the future, and that the city wasn't pursuing him to say he had to put it in right now. That's what I was indicating in what I said.
Council, any other questions?
So regardless, we're moving the fence back?
That is the, that engineering, because of the right-of-way and, and the asset that we have with Street Department and so forth, yes, we will be pursuing that he needs to move that fence out of the public right-of-way and onto his private property.
Has a permit been procured? Do we say that, yes or no?
Tyler Diller, city Pocatello Building Inspector. As for so far the permit, it has not been accepted just yet. It's still in denial until we get the approval from the council of what height of the fence that he can be, either the four-foot or the six-foot. So once we get the approval from the council on this, and we can approve the permit under your guys' approval.
So I'm seeing these pictures here. Are we talking about four-foot at the back of the property along the alley, or along the side of the hole?
So along the side of Lawton Street is where the six-foot comes into play with the alleyway.
Okay.
He's got to be four-foot there, or he has to step it back 20 feet back to go up to six-foot. Since he has a house that's on Lawton Street that faces the street, he has to be at least 20 feet back.
Okay.
Question?
Councilwoman?
So I understand this, if he's going to put the six-foot fence up off of that roadway, he has to take his six-foot fence, if he wants to keep it, and go 20 feet from the curb to settle.
From the property line. It's 20 feet back from the property line. Yes.
But if he does a fourth, if he does a four-foot fence, it's four feet, 20 down alley and 20 down the street, correct? That corner has to be four feet, and then it can go up to six?
He's four-foot only. Since he has a house that faces Lawton Street, on that side of the street right there where the six-foot fence sits, he's only allowed to go four feet on that side. When you have a house facing, as his is facing Third Street, and the neighbor that's on Lawton Street he faces, he's on a corner lot, and he has to abide by two front yard setbacks. He has to abide by his own front yard setback, and then he has to abide by the neighbor's setback of 20 feet on the opposing street.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lurik?
And I don't really know how to even ask this question, and maybe it doesn't make sense, but I'm going to try. So if he sets it back 20 feet, he can have a six-foot fence, right? If he has to move the fence anyway to get it out of the right-of-way, how many feet does that have to go back?
So he can go four-foot right to the back of the, the right-of-way on his own private property. He can be four-foot there, or he has to step it back 20 feet before he can go to six-foot.
Okay.
Other questions, council? Well, it's a council's pleasure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lurik?
I'll go ahead. And this is always a difficult situation, because I know you've put work into this fence and everything, but we have codes for a reason. And I agree with the comment that Councilmember Marshand made earlier about, you know, we have statements from people saying that it's not a traffic issue, but they can say they don't have a problem with it, but they can't state categorically it's not a traffic issue. They're not traffic experts, and we don't know, you know, it could become a traffic issue. But I'm very reluctant to, to not follow our codes. I mean, I think they're there for a reason. There was a reason for the denial. There was a reason that it should have, you know, been done the right way in the first place. And it's, it's a hard thing, but I move that we deny or uphold the denial of the Construction Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurik, a second by Marshand. Wendy, would you call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 9, A Short Plaid Application from Portnoy Western, Great Western Malting Partition. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Portnoy Capital LLC to subdivide 25.75 acres, more or less. The proposed subdivision is generally located northwest of River Parkway. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Council President Cheetham?
Councilwoman Mangum?
I would move that we approve Agenda Item 9 as specified.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Marshand. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Agenda Item Number 10, Idaho Power Utility Easement Request for Ammon Park. Council may wish to approve a request by Idaho Power for an easement at Ammon Park for the extension of an underground power line and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurik?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 10, the request for, from Idaho Power for the utility easement. Authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Boy, he beat you out. A second by Mangum. We got a motion by Lurik and a second by Mangum. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 11, the ADA Curb Ramp Improvement Project Bid Results. Council may wish to accept the recommendation of staff and reject all bids received on June 15, 2023, for the South Fifth Avenue Hayden Street and South Fifth Avenue Wyatt Street ADA Improvements Project, subject to legal department review. The bid amount is in excess of the engineer's estimates and $17,902 over the approved funding amount.
Council President?
Council, Councilwoman May?
I would move that we approve Agenda Item 11, Rejecting All Bids Received on June 15 for the South Fifth Avenue Hayden Street and Fifth Street, Fifth Avenue Wyatt Street ADA Improvement Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurik. Wendy, would you please draw the roll?
Wasn't sure if we were done.
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes. Agenda Item 12, A Piggyback Bid of Sourcewell Contract for Purchase of Mobile Column Lifts and Jackstands for the Fire Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendation of staff and approve the piggyback bid of Sourcewell Contract Number 013020 SKI, be a Northwest Lift and Equipment LLC, for the purchase of six mobile column lifts and four jackstands for the fire department, and recognize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Purchase price for the equipment is $97,106. Funding is available in the Fire Department fiscal year 2023 budget.[1790.08] Mr. Mayor? Councilman Nichols?
I move to approve agenda item number 12 as listed.
Second?
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. Wendy, please call the roll.
Nichols?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurk?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes. And with that, thank you for attending this evening. We are adjourned.